At City Hall as well as virtually. Using Zoom to allow staff and public to social distance. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting tonight on Wave Channel 18 and online through the city's YouTube channel. If you would like to participate in live public comment via the Zoom platform, please refer to the agenda for instructions. Eric Long from the Salt Mine Church will be doing the invocation this evening and Mayor Andriata will begin the meeting immediately after. Pastor along if you'd like to come up.
Thank you. It's an honor, privilege. So let us pray. Father, we just are so honored and really just privileged and blessed. To be chosen to lead this city to to direct the city, the directions of this city, Lord, we so we're asking for your clarity. Your wisdom, your discernment in all things. We ask for your peace. Not only over this evening, over this meeting, but over even as this week's come along and so many things need to be decided and chosen. Or we we need your help. So we ask you to help us. And in Jesus's name, we ask you bless us, you protect us, and you continue to grow us. As a community that draws together to help one another, support one another and be there for each other. Thank you, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Eric. Really appreciate your leadership and your friendship and for being here tonight. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so welcome to the April 26, 2022 regular meeting, City of Lincoln, City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, Public Financing Authority. Call the meeting to order. Ms. Gammel, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Joyner.
Here.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Here.
Councilmember Loretson.
Here.
And Mayor Andriata.
Here. Councilmember Silhai is absent tonight. As you can see, she had a great opportunity to go speak at a conference on infrastructure in Southern California. So that's where she's at. And we appreciate her doing that on the city's behalf. Okay, item number three, report from closed session. Ms. Volkoff?
Thank you, Mayor. We met in closed session and while staff received direction, there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Item number four, Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Whitney Eklund is going to lead the pledge for us tonight.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Whitney. Appreciate that, especially since I asked you last minute. Okay, item number five, Agenda Modifications. Do we have any agenda modifications from the council, from staff? No? Okay. Item number six, we do not have any presentations tonight. And then that leads us to item number seven, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. And so I do have some speaker cards. So we'll start with those here and then we'll go to Zoom. So the first one is Albert Schreiber.
Good evening, Albert Schreiber. More road. So I was looking at the agenda for the closed session that you just had. It's interesting. You got one lawsuit you're talking about and three potential more. And then there's another one for tomorrow. That's that's pretty impressive. That being said, the last two council meetings have been kind of bittersweet for me to watch. Sweet in the context that you guys have accomplished a lot of good things last two two meetings, in my opinion. Of course, the top of that's the the addition of the firemen. That's something that you needed for a long time. So so kudos to all of you for for getting that done and and all the other good stuff. The bitter part was was kind of watching as those agenda items move through and and a lot of public input on the on the items. And it was it was kind of painful to watch the council so excited about the public input. Because there's been public input the last four years that I've been coming. The difference is now you're paying attention to it. So so that's great, too. And the only thing I can see that's changed in that time is we now have a new city manager and semi-new city mayor. So kudos to you, too. My time stopped or where am I at on time, Gwen? So thank you. So my hope is that Mr. Scully doesn't start drinking a Kool-Aid. I had multiple conversations with Mark Scott while he was interim city manager. And I explained to him that he was drinking a Kool-Aid, in my opinion. After a while, I was excited when he first got here, but that kind of my opinion kind of changed. And I told him this. And of course, he denied it. He disagreed with me that he was drinking a Kool-Aid. But I could see it on his face. It was he had the red stain. So that being said, Mr. Scully, good luck. Please don't drink the Kool-Aid.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiber. Next up is Matthew Oliver.
Holly and Paul and the rest really appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak this evening. You know, since I have taken time and invested hundreds of thousands of dollars employing local residents and hoping to invest in to the City of Lincoln. I've been very appreciative of Holly, your leadership, the way the city council in the city has respected and treated me as an entrepreneur and a businessman coming into the region. But the actions last night of City Councilmember Bill directed at me, at my family and at my son in his official capacity representing Lincoln, one besides his physical aggression towards me, his inappropriate touch, his assault and battery that he took out upon me that I'm still recovering and healing from, the verbal altercation he made against my son, his racist rant, the fact that we have a sitting council member who is here this evening trying to operate in an official capacity is an affront to this city and an embarrassment. I am absolutely horrified that he is allowed to sit here today after he physically assaulted me. And he made racist attacks to my child, telling him that he needed to be deported, that he doesn't belong in the United States. My son, who's gone through just vicious attacks throughout his life that we adopted, that we've been able to bring in and raise, the fact that this man who's representing our city, he's representing you. And he came and attacked me physically and verbally assaulted my child. And he's able to sit there today and represent this city. This is inexcusable. The fact that our city does not have a code of conduct for our city representatives should be inexcusable and unacceptable. He should be removed from office. He should not be allowed to be here, and he should go to jail.
So, thank you, Matthew. I appreciate. So ladies and gentlemen, I I appreciate your passion. I'm going to ask you to not applause either way. We don't want any speaker to feel intimidated. So although I appreciate you being here, I appreciate the comments. Thank you, Matthew. Let's let's just not applause. That way anybody who wants to speak will not feel intimidated. Yeah, yeah. And you know what? You will get one. I I have a response. I will make some comments, but I'm going to save my comments for council-initiated business. Now it's the time for the public to speak. I I will, sir. I will. Yeah. In the due due process of the meeting. So thank you. Thank you, Matthew. I appreciate you being here and your your comments. So the next up is Adam.
Good evening, council. I'm here in support of local business owner Matthew Oliver. I'm sure that you're all aware of the video that's out of the occurrence that happened yesterday. And I find it appalling, Mr. Loretson's behavior and very unbecoming of the city. So I'm here to call for his removal. In recent times, we've it's kind of shined a spotlight on public officials. And this is one of those times. It's time. It's time for him to go. And however you need to do it. That's what I'm here to say. Get rid of him. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michael Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm here to support Matthew Oliver. Last night I was watching Facebook Live from William Jessup where Matthew was filming potential governor candidates for the state of California. And I wanted to hear them speak. And in that process, I seen Councilmember start to antagonize Matthew. And it wasn't funny. You know, most people thought it was. You know, you can tell it kind of started off as a joke, but it wasn't any of us. This isn't the first time Mr. Lawrence has done this. He's also done this at a Western Plastered Unified School District meeting where he not only belittled, he attacked and threatened the school board with keeping the mask mandate and trying to enforce the vaccine mandate by stating they needed to vote for that. This is not the first time his actions have done this. He obviously is very unhinged, and something needs to be done by all of you. There's something you can do. And I'm asking you all tonight to do that. Find a way to remove him from this council. We have a great city here. Matthew Oliver has done so much for the city, for this county, and for this state. This man has done things for us that nobody on this board would do. Nobody stepped up when he did. He kept his business open. He kept local residents employed. And to me, to see him have to go through that from a man who was representing the City of Lincoln last night is absolutely appalling and disgusting. And he needs to be removed immediately. If you do not, Mr. Loretson, you need to step down because not only to this city, to this county, to the state, but for the previous seat you held within the United States government, you are just a disgusting human being. And I feel sorry for you that you have no words. You just sit there. What you did was uncalled for, seriously uncalled for. You are a racist, and let's call it what it is. Matthew Oliver has done more for the city than you ever have or ever will. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next up is Keila Ruiz Marquez.
Thank you all. I want to come from a different perspective. Having been a public servant for this community, it really breaks my heart to have seen what I saw last night. We may not always share the same opinion, but there's many of you that I've worked with before. You are great for this community. You scrub things out. You work together and you hold the community members at the heart of what we all do. It makes me very disappointed when there has been many years and many people that have been public servants. You taint not just the current city council members. You taint those people like me that served this particular community, sir. And I'm talking to you, Councilmember District Four. I think it's appalling that your actions do not represent your constituents, nor those that have served in the past. When I wore a badge as a peace officer, you had very, very strict rules that you had to follow. You had to know your role, stay in your lane, and you had to be there for the people that you represented. Your emotional instability or immaturity is not allowed in professional environments such as you exhibited poorly last evening. I directly am ashamed to have my name associated with somebody that currently is representing such a great community where we have so many constituents that are working their tails off to make it even better. You shamed me.
Thank you. And last card that I have is for Siobhan Oliver.
Hi. Hi. I don't often do this. I do actually want to see him. Can I move this so I can see him as I speak? My husband speaks. I don't do a lot of public speaking. I was watching the live video last night as I often do. My husband goes live often. It's not. It's not been an issue. He interviews lots of people from different walks of life, different backgrounds. I'm from the UK. So really, if you wanted to deport anyone in my family, it would be me. I'm a legal resident, but green card holder. And I married an American 23 years ago. And we have five amazing children. And I have an amazing husband. And as I was watching that live last night, I could tell he was shaken and he had no idea where your reaction came from or how anybody who who has a seat in public, like you're meant to be fighting for people, not fighting them. I was horrified. I came to America. I watched the movies, how amazing America is and how awesome the people are. And for the most part, that's what I've experienced. But what I saw last night, I was horrified that my husband, who is an amazing father, and you know what, Bill, if you could look at me for a moment, the reason why my husband has fought, he's not against vaccinations. Just so you know, all of our children are vaccinated. However, for this particular, they call it a vaccine, who knows what it is. But for this particular, what they're saying is a vaccination, he fights for choice because of me. We do have members of our family that are vaccinated. But we found out very tragically that my father has a blood mutation that after having this vaccination, he had a stroke immediately following it. Then we found out about this blood mutation that I carry and one of my daughters carry. And we've been highly recommended by medical professionals not to get this vaccination. That is why he fights for pro-choice, that people should be able to weigh up the facts and choose for themselves. But the problem is, is you you people, that's a horrible statement. I apologize for that. That was not a good statement. That's the only thing you've agreed with tonight. But I apologize for it because I own my stuff. Okay, but Bill, the way you come at people with your own agendas and your own beliefs, it's nasty. It's really nasty. It's quite evil, actually. Nobody should endure that. And you don't know my husband. No, you don't. You've journeyed with him for 23 years of your life. He's sat next to you through
Let's let's keep this a public comment and not response at this time.
10 miscarriages. You've you've he's sat next to you through 10 losses of life. You've carried children and and he's loved you, supported you, walked with you.
Hey, that's not for you to say. That's my job. That's my job.
Oh, this is a good demonstration. This is also on camera.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I hear. Yes.
Just with my son.
Yes, you may.
My son.
Go ahead. You may finish.
He's gone through a lot of trauma. Matthew mentioned it.
Gwen, would you turn the timer off for me? Thank you.
It was he my husband and my son, I went and met them where they were at last night. They had to go back to work after that meeting. They were so in shock how they were treated. Do you know how many years it's taken for me to help my boy get confidence back in his life? You're a very unfeeling, not very nice person, even your disrespect. It's just really sad. And I you shouldn't be here. You shouldn't be here tonight. You should have stayed home. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else in the room who would like to give public comment that you didn't fill out a card? Okay, Mr. Chapman, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. Regardless of the reason people are here, it's nice to see other people here as well, getting involved with the city. My issue, well, I should just my old public announcement that I make every once in a while when I see unfamiliar faces here. Whenever it becomes an opportunity for the public to speak on any particular item, you are not required to fill out a card. It does make it easier for the council to determine how many cards there are on speakers, but it is not a requirement. So you need to understand that. That's under the Brown Act. My particular scenario is has to do with the ADA information still on the website. I've checked it the last four weeks. I brought it up on March the 22nd. And ADA information is still not there. I literally had to work incredibly hard to try to figure out even where that was. And when I did do that, I got the oops page not it's not there. I even went on to Google and Googled ADA compliant transition plan for 2018. And even that said, oops, it's not available. So I went ahead and looked at, well, how does a person register a comment or a complaint? Went all the way down and clicked on what I could find and oops, it's not available. I think this council, and I think everyone else is probably aware that the Americans Disability Act isn't just a document that says, well, we have to do this. It is that. But it shouldn't be left in the dust. It is a civil rights violation. Everywhere here in this room, if you have those rights and you're stripped of those, I have a feeling if someone came in here and said, you guys can't say pledge allegiance to the flag, it's our right as an American. And yet, under the ADA, I've been fighting this city for years, and we have made wonderful strides. We certainly have. But to have a system that is still not up and running and still can't find anything under the ADA, I know how to look for it. I eventually did find it, but I had to go out of my way in which to find that. I I would hope by the time the next meeting comes into play, I would hope that someone, anyone who has a complaint or a concern about the ADA in the City of Lincoln would be able to go on to the website and find it without any difficulties whatsoever, because they don't know what I know, and it shouldn't have to happen that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown, I know you addressed this the last time. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, that is something that we are actively working on. One of our staff that is most has most knowledge on the ADA Transition Plan, where we are, what we've completed, has been out ill for about a month. And I've been in contact and I have some information, but not all of it. And I didn't want to publish a partial page. So we will have that, I'm sure, by the next meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Ms. Gammel, is there anybody on Zoom who has public comment that is not on the agenda?
Yes, we do have a hand raised. Lena Lebowski.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I had planned to speak about what happened last night, that Matthew Oliver and his wife have already spoken quite well about it, so I won't go into what happened. Bill Loretson is my representative of Lincoln Hills to City Council. And you know what? I would rather have no one represent me than Bill Loretson. He needs to resign tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Anybody else, Gwen?
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Terry Hearn. I don't have anything prepared because I just saw the videos that were shared from last night, and I was so disappointed in our community. We should be lifting up these business people that have tried so hard to stay together through COVID. And then to have somebody who represents the community behave in such an appalling manner is so embarrassing. And you know that's going to go everywhere. So I don't know. I saw that, oh, there's nothing we can do to manage this behavior or this person. And I don't know, Bill. I had just saw something posted that there's no action that can be taken. It's got to be some kind of liability, having a loose cannon going around with no sense of control. There's a difference between just having a public face and being a public servant. I was a public servant for 34 years and I lived and breathed it, just like the other gal. And if you don't have that frame of mind coming into this, you might as well just quit now because you're doing nobody any favors. So if we can't rally behind our local businesses and like that BS letter that he received, everybody should be concerned about any business getting a letter like that. I'm not saying Bill did it or whatever, but from anybody. So if you're not listening now, people that are dialed in on Zoom, you all better get around our community and lift each other up and stop the pettiness. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, one last call. Public comment. Okay, so as I said a moment ago, there's there's much to say and I will address it, but I'm going to save it for council-initiated business just so we can stay within our agenda and keep it moving. So if you want to stay and stay around and wait for that, please do. So that will be coming. And I will address comments of what Terry just said also. Okay, let's move on to item eight, the Consent Agenda. All matters on the Consent Agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the City Council or resident requests a specific item be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Joyner and I agree, asked to remove 8F because we are filling some committee positions and people are here. We'd like to recognize them. And then 8H, correct? Was there any other items that council would like to pull from the Consent Agenda? Is there any from the public that would like to pull an item from Consent? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, all right. So pulling 8F, 8H, and then I will accept the motion to approve the rest of the Consent Agenda.
So move.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
And Mayor Andriata.
Yes. Okay, so let's start with 8F. This is Adopt Resolution 202288, approving the appointments to fill the vacant positions on the Economic Development Committee, Fiscal and Investment Oversight, and Library Advisory Board. And Ms. Gammel, did you want to read those off? Or did Mr. Scully, who wants to? I know you guys probably weren't prepared for that, but I'd like to
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I know Whitney's here.
So we we are appointing Whitney Eklund to the Economic Development Committee. We appointed Josh Armstrong to the Financial Investment Oversight Committee. And I know there was a library appointment and the name is escaping, right?
Lynn Snyder.
Yes. And then was there one more?
David Richatello.
Yes, to Economic Development. Okay, yes.
We also appointed John Reedy.
Oh, Reedy to the FIAC, right? Okay. So we want to say congratulations to all of you and thank you for your service. Councilmember Joyner, did you want to make a comment about that since you pulled it?
I I wasn't going to, but I guess I will.
You don't have to.
No, no, no. This is a difficult task that we undertake. And having more citizens engaged and involved advising us is incredibly valuable to us. We can get closed into a bit of a silo. And and having as many of our fellow citizens engaged and involved in advising us and guiding us is very, very important. And the willingness of folks to step up and to fulfill those roles. We don't always utilize them as best we can. We need to get better about that moving forward. But but I just want to thank all of you in the room and those who are not here for being willing to step up and to be part of this wonderful community and help guide it forward.
Thank you. Yes, we really value and appreciate your time and your commitment to the community. Okay, so since we pulled it, is there any public comment on that? Go ahead, Whitney.
I just wanted to thank the council for appointing me for this position. And I wanted to state that I take it very seriously. And I look forward to supporting our local economy and Lincoln as best my ability. And I wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve item 8F.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please. Yes, Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
Councilmember Loretson.
Yes.
And Mayor Andriata. Yes. Okay, item 8H, Adopt Resolution 202290, allowing the city manager to execute a contract for construction with PBM Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,149,031 for the Aiken Park Phase Three Project. CIP 461 authorized the city engineer to approve change orders not to exceed $172,355 and authorize the city manager to execute a task order with cost and civil engineering in the amount not to exceed $220,000 for construction management and inspection services. Sean, did you Sean, did you want to talk about this or did you want Travis to?
I can kind of just explain the comments that were received. So this is a park that is partially completed and the way that these parks are funded these days is that developers, one of the newer tools that they have is essentially a bonding mechanism that is a temporary community facilities district that's placed on each property. And so it allows the developer to basically borrow a large amount of funding or submit that to the city and build bigger chunks of parks versus maybe waiting almost till the very end. In this particular case, if you've been to Aiken Park, you know that part of the park is done and then quite a bit that's not completed. And so one of the complications of developing parks in this construction climate is that what once was a million dollars is now two and so on and so forth. And so what we tried to do with quite a bit of outreach actually to the Sorento neighborhood was get an idea about what are the most important kind of amenities you're looking for. And then Travis and his team put out a pretty clever deductive bid, which basically had five alternatives of different amenities. Because our concern, which proved to be correct, was that we don't have enough money in the total budget to do all of the amenities that had been originally conceived for the park. So with that said, the additions to what exists that are proposed under this item are a parking lot with minor concrete work and landscaping, which is the vast majority of the project cost. It's about $840,000. Restroom facilities, which do not exist currently out there, shade structures, which include market lighting for parties and and birthday events and special needs activity equipment to provide accessibility at some of those playground facilities. So it's not quite the total package that we had hoped for. And some of the feedback that I received actually just today, which I thought was very valuable, was a few members of the public sent me emails and I think Councilmember Joyner too, basically saying, you know, we're happy about the park being built. We're very happy. But we question whether spending so much of the available project budget on a parking lot really makes sense, given that the amenities that are supposed to be in the park are not going to be there potentially for some time. And so it's a really interesting comment and it's with merit for sure. I think the concern is we could, if you look at the staff report, it sort of details out soccer rooms and some other, there was an orchard garden that was thought of at one time. And you could do portions or the whole of those other projects. The issue with a sports field, and I'm going to actually ask Scott for him to come up and speak to this a little bit, is it's sort of like Sophie's Choice, right? You either have to, you have to have the parking if you're going to have the sports field. Because one thing we know is when soccer games occur on the weekends, parents come out, grandparents come out, and all of a sudden, what isn't a parking problem becomes a very serious parking problem. And for people that live immediately adjacent to the park, for the entirety of my career, I've heard that complaint when a park is underparked. Two is that if you build the park and have no amenity with it, the concern is, well, maybe the parking lot really is not used as much. And so therefore, we're not really getting much value out of it. So Scott, do you need to add anything to that or I pretty much sum up? Okay, so there's really a couple of options for council. You could move forward with the project. The city engineer and I have discussed using public facility impact fees essentially to fund the remaining amenities, which we could, with a couple tweaks, we could really make a regional case for it. Because, you know, we're already short on a lot of sports fields. They need to be added into our system. And so we could plan to do that as part of this coming budget year through, you know, an amendment or maybe even a mid-year adjustment. Or council could say, you know what? We're going to boot it back to staff. We want you to relook at all of our options. We already have the bids, so we could presumably look at other alternatives of options you could fund and bring that back to you. It's very important to us that it gets done right. On the other hand, we've heard loud and clear from that neighborhood that they're really tired of waiting for the park and I don't blame them. So that is the long version of a longer story.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a request also to pull it and take it back to staff, but we'll see what the council has to say and then we'll go out for a public comment. Dan, go ahead.
I was going to suggest doing the same thing. And at the same time, I would suggest going back to the immediate community, that area that's going to be impacted because it is Sophie's Choice. And see what their feeling is, whether possibly putting in the sports fields with less parking or substandard parking, which implies that there would be parking in their residential streets. Have them have them kind of tell you what they want, since they're the ones going to be most impacted. Not that everybody wants more soccer fields, but anyway, that's why I think you ought to take it back, get a little more community involvement, and then bring it forward.
Oh, do you have any comments or?
I do, I do. I think that's actually an excellent idea, Dan, is to take it back to the folks who live there and who are going to be most impacted by it and who are going to be using this park. I think their biggest, one of their biggest concerns, the obvious big concern is there's a big chunk of money being used for a parking lot that isn't going into the park itself. But I think they are also fearful and maybe understandably so, if you take a look at Nathan Dubin Park, which is over by me, that it becomes more than a neighborhood park once you do that. And so I say take it back to the public, let them evaluate what they want. Let's take a hard look at it. Scott, is it currently posted no parking all the way around the park? Okay.
So you recorded.
Hello.
Hello.
It is around Sorrento Parkway.
Okay, so as we move forward, it will take a while to build these improvements for the park. The bridge at the end of Ferrari tying into Moore Road is also about to begin construction, which would take a lot of that traffic off Sorento and turn it back into the neighborhood it's meant to be. So maybe we need to take that into consideration and how we might, over time, loosen some of those parking restrictions around the park.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We'd have to go out, Travis chime in. But I'm not sure if that road is wide enough to do that. I think it's probably seven foot wide between the street edge and the curb, which I don't think would be safe for people getting out, but that's something we have to look at for sure.
That's fair, yeah.
One thing I'd like to add too is how long would those bids be good for? Thirty days? Is that good for 30 days?
We've got 90 days on the bid. We may also have some timely expense on the bond proceeds, so we need to keep, I guess, this on the forefront. We'll need to look back into that.
Reason that we can't getting, we could do it the old fashioned way, right? We could call a meeting at Aiken Park for the community and try to get as much feedback as possible, just understanding that we have, the clock is ticking. We need to make a decision. Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I brought that up. It's because at some point, if we have to go back out to bid and we go beyond that bid date, then the price is going to go higher.
Is there a compromise here in Gemnas Park? We effectively put in a gravel parking lot. Is there a compromise of a gravel parking lot until such time as we pull together the funds to complete that and throw the rest of the funds into amenities within the park?
Yeah, we could definitely look at alternatives. One thing is, this is a paved parking lot. It's got all the curb gutter sidewalk, other features that if we do gravel, a lot of times we'd have to bring it up for ADA drainage, stuff like that. The paving component alone is less than 200,000, so a lot of it is in the sidewalks, the grading, the the other components of the parking lot, that just saving the asphalt wouldn't be significant.
Bill, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, all right. Any public comments or questions on this item? Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Stay close in case there's a question that we need you to answer.
We do have one on Zoom.
Okay, go ahead.
Dennis, please go ahead.
Yes, this is Dennis Clear. Councilmembers, thanks for letting me talk. I live across from Aiken Park and I'm one of the people who kind of brought this item to the members' attention. And thank you. I think it should go back to staff. I know my neighbors would love to have some further discussion and conversation about the park. The only thing I would want to share as a point of information about the budget, which I think really drives a lot of your decision-making and priorities. And this is an issue within the community is Aiken Park is in Sorrento Village. Sorrento Village is in benefit zone 18 of the lighting and landscaping district. It currently pays the highest lighting and landscaping district fees and we run an annual surplus of about $150,000 a year. Now, over the years, we've been told that that eventually will be balanced out and the money will be more equitable across the district. So that's just something to consider because I know in talking to my neighbors, that has become somewhat of an issue. When they look at the Marrent, the Melrose and the lighting and landscaping fees, they're kind of asking, so what are we getting? So if there's any way of using the lighting and landscaping fees, which is certainly a budget issue, that might be a way of funding some of those amenities. So, but thank you. And I think sending it back to staff and engaging the community is an excellent idea. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, any other comments? Okay, bringing it back to council. I'm in favor of sending it back to staff, reworking it, seeing where we are. Is that okay with you guys? Okay, so then we will, we won't vote on this. We'll just send it back? Okay, correct. Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you, everybody, for that. Excuse me. All right, moving on, item nine, we have no public hearings. Item 10, general business 10A. Adopt resolution 202292 authorizing the approval of five positions in the community development and augment the fiscal year 2122 approved budget and fund 248 and 100 in the amount of And Veronica is going to give us a report on this. Thank you, Veronica.
Good evening, council members, Mayor and council members. And this is a request for five positions in the Community Development Department and a 2122 fiscal year budget augmentation to fund these positions. A recent review of the city's development activity identified that from the first quarter of 2018 and the first quarter of 2022, permit activity has grown by tenfold. These positions are being requested in an effort to improve customer support for the existing development and to ensure that there is adequate staffing for anticipated new development. The positions requested are one associate planner, one permit technician, one senior engineer, and two building inspectors. The total annual cost to fund these positions is approximately $603,000. For 2122 fiscal year, an augmentation of approximately $10,000 to the general fund and $100,000 to the Development Services Fund is necessary. This concludes my report and we'll now answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, if I could just add one more thing. So we did something a little unusual. We anticipated that there would be a really strong argument for this. But what I want to add to what Veronica said, just from my seat, is that this is very similar to the discussion you had about fire. It's different in the sense that they're very different roles, but it's the same in the sense that the discussion is really about you have a demand. And in order to do that, we need living, breathing human beings to meet it. And so we would very much appreciate your support and I can tell you that I suspect the development community would be very happy because it will hopefully allow things to move differently in that department.
Thank you. All right, council, questions, comments? Okay, any public comment on this? Anybody on Zoom? Oh, yes, Tony, go ahead.
Tony Frazier is Frazier Design Group. You know, nobody sent me directly, but I can say that I speak on behalf of all the projects I do in Lincoln. We really appreciate this effort to augment staff and help us to really find staff to talk to, maybe minimize the time. Funny, I was talking to one potential developer today and they were debating about the timing, how long it takes through Lincoln. And, you know, the story goes from a few years to 10 years and so forth. So anything you do, you know, bringing staff on board, individuals willing to meet and make decisions, be empowered, you know, we have to start somewhere. This is a great step toward that. I think we have, you know, I really appreciate Sean and his efforts. He's been a great addition. We have Mel and, you know, there are more and more staffs are being added. I think this is a great, wonderful thing to do, to help us at least ease the burden on the staff that's currently involved, that, you know, sometimes we burden them with many, many, many calls. So having people wisdom that they can be delegated to is really, really a wonderful idea. So I appreciate it and Sean has been working hard to interview, bring these people on board and we appreciate your support in that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, any other comments? Okay, so bringing it back to council, I'm in favor. I plan on supporting. So if there's no other questions and go ahead.
Real quick, if I may.
Yeah.
So for years, we have heard from the development company, you, or company, community, that we need more people. We need more staff. There are log jams within your organizations that are costing us money and time. Council has directed staff to hire those additional people if we have the revenues to do so. We've been told quite often, either that funding does not exist or that the market is so difficult. Anybody who's out there that's any good is already working for somebody and we can't pull them over. What we find is that with Sean on board, that is not true. And so I am very, very appreciative that you took a hard look at this, made the recommendation that needed to be made and are going to be able to act on this. I'm going to support it wholeheartedly.
Anything else? Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to approve this item.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent. Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And Mayor Andriata.
Yes. All right, thank you very, thank you, Veronica. Item 10B, Enterprise Resource Planning, adopt resolution 202293 authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for services with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for citywide enterprise financial software implementation, migration, training, maintenance, and hosting in the amount not to exceed $1,773,969, which includes a 10% contingency for implementation. The city's financial ERP software implementation, migration, and training will be VIP and associated SaaS fees for the duration of the five-year contract will be budgeted annually. I know this is something that we've been waiting for, for a really long time. So take it away, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I wanted to give a brief overview of what the citywide financial ERP software is because it's really expensive. It's going to take a lot of staff resources and you probably want to know what we're buying. I'm going to wait a second to see if they can pull a presentation. That looks weird, but. Yeah, just a little off, so hopefully we can continue here. Okay, so we'll see. What is an ERP? ERP stands for Enterprise Resource Planning Software. And so what that is, is it's kind of like the brain of a organization, the central nervous system. It feeds, everything feeds into it and it tries to connect it all together and make things run more efficiently. So just the basic definition is it just helps manage all core business processes in an integrated system. When we went out for an RFP, it was originally published in November of 2021. When we, we went out for an RFP, it was originally published in November of 2021. We had three vendors submit proposals. And the, I've listed here what our requirements are for the vendors to submit. The, as a full-service city, we have a lot of different departments that are kind of like small business units that we would need to have into the ERP. And what we didn't want was have a vendor submit this software for this piece, this software for this piece, and this for this, and have to integrate it all together. So the components were here listed, are listed. We also didn't want a vendor that was new, you know, new in business or recently bought or something. So there was a 10-years-of-experiments requirement as well. We had also wanted to make sure that there's a lot of other cities that have used this same software. I didn't want to hire a whole team to administer the backend of this system, so there was a non-SAP, non-Oracle requirement. And the, we also wanted it to be vendor-cloud-hosted because at City Hall, we don't have a backup generator onsite. And so if we lose power here, we can't have our entire ERP system go down.
You might explain what SAP is to the audience.
Yeah, SAP is a, it's a database backend that is, I don't know how to explain it.
It's a huge mess.
It's, yeah.
That drives companies the size of General Motors.
Yeah.
And the federal government.
The nice way of putting it. And the other thing is that we just wanted to make sure that they had, they were proven in the industry. So who was the chosen vendor? We chose Tyler Technologies. They were the only vendor that met the requirements. We had one who didn't have a utility billing module ready. They had a utility, they were actually rebuilding their utility billing module from the ground up, and it was, we would have been beta, and it wouldn't have been ready for a couple of years. And then the other vendor was non-responsive. The, when I submitted back information to them, I got a, this person no longer works here email. Their, Tyler is well-known with local government and public agencies. It's scalable. One thing about our current system is it's good for a city of about size of 20,000 people. Once you get above that, it's, it can't keep up with what our needs are. And the best part was is within our budget. It was what we had originally estimated for what the capital project was going to be, and we were within. This is a huge project, and we won't be implementing everything at the same time. So it's implemented in phases. So first is the financials. That is the general ledger and accounting and all the stuff that goes on with that. We'll need, I could go more into depth on that. And then followed by payroll and HR, and then lastly, with utility billing. Due to the staffing levels that we have and the resources that we have available, we didn't want to kill staff, so we've separate, we've lengthened the timeline and not overlapped things as much as was originally proposed. We have a consultant, project manager, SDI Consulting, which we had gone out and, to help us with this implementation. They have gone through and done a readiness report on our current loads, our current staffing levels, and, you know, what everyone does. And they are the, they've recommended backfill staff of two to four FTE over the course of the project. Also, with the length and time, it's going to take three to four years to fully implement these three phases. The other thing that we really need to focus on and be mindful of is the mitigation of risk. This would be loss of key staff. If we lose key staff during this process, then it's going to set us back quite a bit, as well as just resources. And this, because it touches every department in the city, and it's going to touch not just finance, I mean, it's going to be a huge load on finance. It's going to also just take time from all departments because it's going to be used by everyone. It's not just going to be used by finance. And this is in a, this is everything that we will be implementing in the city. I don't know if you guys see stuff, can't see that, sorry. But it's there, it's a huge lift. And with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you. Well, I can't tell if you're really excited about this, if you're just like about to cry, so.
I think it's a little bit of both. Like, I think it's, you know, it's really exciting because what we have is, is so awful, and we'll be gaining so many more efficiencies and redoing workflows. And whenever we can make those kinds of strides, that really is exciting for me. But at the same time, I just know that, like, you know, one of my goals is that nobody cries or rage quits over this. So, but, you know, we'll, we'll get there. And the best part is, is that staff is 100% willing. Like, they are ready to go. They're excited about this, and so, you know, I can't ask for a better team.
I think that's amazing. Well, here's my promise to you, that if you have a hard day, or if you feel like staff is about to cry, call me and I'll bring cupcakes. Or, you know, whatever. We want to make sure that everybody stays happy. All right, comments, questions from council?
Sure, long overdue.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So you, you mentioned mitigation of risk and the worry about key staff members perhaps departing during that period of time. How do we adjust for that? How do we correct for that? It's such a long period of time. There is a probability that we'll lose at least one.
I think a lot of it is going to be, you know, we do cross-training within the departments, and so having that knowledge passed down to the, to other people to be able to carry the project forward is going to be a big piece.
Perfect, Angela. Thank you.
Did you want to say something, or did she say it already?
That's, what she said is correct, and then the other part is really my job is to make sure that.
To make sure everybody stays happy?
Try to keep as many of our great people as we can.
Yes, good, thank you. All right, Dan, did you have something you want to say?
I have a lot of comments on it. Number one, it's a real-time system, which means it's not a batch system, which means when you want a piece of information, you, when the staff needs, when Sean needs to know something, I need to know something, it's accessible. Doesn't take you two weeks to get the data. The second thing is that it includes a real-time card system and for tracking time, and it includes a project accounting system, which we've never had, very few cities have. But it's the right way to run projects, and we do a lot of projects, to run projects and to know what projects cost and, and, and in time, effort, and money. So it's going to solve a lot of the systemic problems that the city has had for years and help us to end up with a better product, which is services to everybody. I, in my review of the enterprise, by the way, you also do inherently, she's already mitigated a lot of risk by picking Tyler. And by working Tyler will have people working with our people, learning how our people do their jobs, and maybe suggesting better ways to do their job. But, so there is some redundancy there, if you do have to lose people. My real only comment in the whole thing was, I would like to see, and it isn't in the current implementation discussion, I would like to see some sort of a liaison committee or, I don't know what you call it, but does get one or two council people involved from a status, being on top of it, because it's a significant, it's a significant project for the city because it impacts so many things. So if, if the council has people that are on top of it, they're not going to be surprised and, and be able to get whatever help was needed to solve the problem. Other than that, I, I'll go for the thing without.
I heard that as Dan would like to be involved.
No, I think it's Dan and somebody else, because Dan ain't going to be around before it's finished. Anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you. Bill, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, this one, no.
Okay, all right. Any public comment on this item? City Treasurer, Richard Pearl.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard Pearl, City Treasurer. I would just like to, my comments are really directed to the community as well as to the council. And the reason that it is, is that we're planning on spending $1.8 million. It's a lot of money without a doubt, and it's one of those projects that the community won't see. It's not like police or fire or parks or, or roads or streets. It's something that is absolutely necessary for us to carry on the business. It's more than just the mind, the brain. It's really, a financial system is the heart of everything that goes on within the city. You can't get where you want to go unless you know where you are and what's happened in the past to give you guidance into the future. I remember we went through this discussion in 1910, I think, when the, when the current system was put into play. I didn't think it was a very good system at that point.
That was 2010, right? Boy, I'm really getting older.
Yeah, not 1910.
That was a very good year, by the way. Anyway, you know, it was a system that we, we put into place. It got us through, you know, a decade or so. It is long overdue. We really need to step into the future. You know, I've heard of these people. I've seen what their, their client lists are. This is a quality firm. It's going to take a long time to put this in, but it's absolutely something that we need. Money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Hey, Mr. Chapman, go ahead.
Springbrook was actually 20 years ago.
Yeah, I was going to say it was 2002 or '03. And he shows it.
Once again, Byron Chapman. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff. The, I too, over time, have been, the city's been working hard to try to put all this together. Just three comments or questions. I heard that the city doesn't have a backup generator, and if power goes off, what does the city do? So my question is, what can be done in order to avoid that kind of calamity? Some sort of system, my home computer, for example, every five minutes, it backs up what I'm working on. So if something goes, well, at least I've got everything up to the last five minutes. And again, that's up to the city. Also, because this will take a time, it, it might be helpful for us to, as the city or as residents, to find out what the top three or four items are that the city will be working on. So at least we're up to speed with what is going on, just to know that. And to make sure that, if, if there's any warning signs along the way, is there any way that they can head this off in the event it looks like we're getting off track? An example might be, we should be looking and being here in six months to a year. Are we actually there? Yeah, how do we correct for that? Things go awry, things do happen like that, and I think sometimes it's, it's, it's important to have that safety net to at least figure out what to do if and when it happens, and hopefully it will. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Anybody on Zoom? Gwen? Okay, bring it back to the council. Any further comments or questions? I, you know, I, I just think over the last several years and how much work we have done to clean up our processes and our systems. And I know that you guys have been working on this, getting this for a really long time. And I know this is a big reason why you actually came here, because this was on the horizon. And so I'm very excited that we're finally at the place where we're able to do this. Thank you for, for all the hard work. Thank you for the planning and the preparation and the hard work it's going to take to get it all installed. And you're never allowed to quit or leave. Just kidding. No, I really appreciate you. And I'm very excited that we're finally at the place where we get to approve this and get rolling. So if, if there's no other comments or questions, I will take a, a motion to approve this item.
I move to approve. Second.
Hey, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence and.
Yes.
And Mayor Andriata.
Yes. All right, thank you, Jennifer. All right, item 10C, Adopt Resolution 202294, authorizing a temporary skate park located at Chigamanis Park until such time as a permanent skate park is funded and constructed. All right, Mr. Skell, you're welcome.
Good evening, council. So, oh, oh, okay. One of the cool things, one of the few cool things of being a city manager is that you get to sort of take the projects that you think are the coolest and present them yourself. So I assigned myself the skate park project. I'm not going to go into the long-tortured history of that location, the previous location. I don't think it's productive for this discussion. Suffice to say that it has been a consistent thing that the city council and community have, have brought up to the council over a number of years, ever since the previous skate park at McBean was, was deconstructed and closed. So the, there's a very active community around skating and biking here in Lincoln. And their ask, I think, was pretty reasonable, was, look, we know that the city has been planning and even applying for grants for a nice permanent skate park location in Lincoln that may or may not come to pass, but in the meantime, is there a way we could at least set up some type of temporary skate park location? So Doug Brown, who's here, and Scott both did some work on this. And Doug wrote a fabulous memo that went to the Recreation Commission a couple of weeks ago. And they essentially deliberated over four locations, which I'm going to walk you through here. First one is, just put it back where it was. That's where it was. The chief will tell you that it was problematic for a long time, and he thinks that it will be problematic moving forward if that location is chosen. So what we would say that is, if that's council's desire, the, the amount of resources we'll need to put into the location to really create something that's not as problematic would, would be significant, I think. We'd be talking significant fencing, significant cameras, and probably a lot of staff time just getting back there and checking. And incidentally, in case you don't know about the scenario, I know we have lots of folks here tonight. One of the problems with this location is that it backs right up to the ravine, and it's kind of in an area of McBean that's like almost tucked as far as possible into the park. And so it's very difficult for our law enforcement to see, when they're just doing patrol along roadways, whether there's something going on back there. Additionally, when you actually have to get back there for a call, it's not exactly a, a quick in or out. And, and in addition to that, we, we do have some, some homelessness and other issues along the ravine that tended to create conflict from time to time there. So, so that's that story. Second location, not much better. It's simply move it over a couple to, to some basketball courts here. This is slightly different because there are, there is significant fencing in this location, but, you know, these are, still pretty much have the same safety concerns. And, and so, but nonetheless, we're just looking at easy, quick projects that we could stand up quickly. Okay, third location is Jimenez Park. This, right, I didn't, I wasn't able to superimpose my little red lines for some reason on this one, but in your report, you can see them, the, the gray square here in the middle is two basketball courts. And. And the proposal would be to use temporarily one of them to house our temporary skate park location. This property is very different from, for a bunch of reasons. From a safety perspective, it's along a main roadway, very easy to see. You're not on the backside of a ravine. And provides, you know, it's, it's not a forever location, but it would provide a suitable interim spot. The final one was to, oops, pour a pad at Community Center Park, which is the original location that had been conceived in our grant proposal to build a skate park. We are not likely to get that great. And it's not that it's not deserved or needed. It's simply that our, the, the way that the state identifies and, and rates grant proposals, especially for parks, is based on income data. And our income data, especially in the census tract, is nowhere near the levels that are competitive statewide. So we'd rather spend resources on things we can actually complete versus ones that, that are more of long shots. So with all that said, the Recreation Commission talked about it and voted unanimously for Jimenez Park. And we think that it will, roughly going to cost about $15,000 for fencing and some signage. The Lincoln Bike and Skate Association has committed to donate all of the ramps and rails and things that the folks will use to use that space. And so it's a fairly inexpensive project to provide an amenity that doesn't exist currently in the community. So that's the recommendation for Recreation Commission, and thus it is from staff too. So I've been answering any questions.
Hey, thanks, Sean. Okay, comments, questions?
I have a question. The, this, the temporary installation, does the installation of like rails and that kind of thing, does it do anything to the basketball court?
Yeah.
And if it does, those are repairable.
Yeah. Scott, can you come address that? I'll just be making it up.
I think all that will, the, the benefit we'll have from what we're doing is we can cut off, they'll be anchored into the concrete. We can cut them off flush. But I don't think ultimately there'd be really no damage. Yeah.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure they were going to be locked down and not sliding.
They will be. We'll do the fence in the same fashion. We'll bolt the fence down to separate the two courts.
Thank you.
So you can cut them off flush? Is it goes back to, to being a basketball court? Any concerns about that?
No.
Being present, so you gotta do a thin coat of concrete on the top of that?
Correct. When I would, when I would take them out, it would be safe for somebody falling, tripping, falling down. There'd be no, I, I kind of see you're thinking maybe some sharp edges from the, from the bolts being sheared off. No, I'm, I'm not concerned about that. Okay, we'd make it safe.
So the original, I think we really need to emphasize, this is a temporary skate park. We somehow lost that on the last one. That too was a temporary skate park that I think folks wanted to have become permanent along the way. But that park, the original skate park was fenced at one time, very high fences that were
10-foot fence, yes.
And to my memory, and I suspect yours as well, that fence became so damaged from people trying to cut their way into it once we locked the gates, that we eventually tore it down.
Correct.
This is a much more visible location. That said, the same could happen. What precautions can we take to keep a close eye on that? Maybe that's for the chief.
Yeah, I'm not
Do we have any cameras in the area right now? Do you know?
We don't. The clubhouse probably would have some. We have a, we have a restroom facility that we can install some cameras on. It would be sufficient, I would think.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a very, relatively very minimal cost for a pretty good security benefit that we'll include in the totality of the project, just because, you know, I think the, the point here is that we want to learn from maybe some mistakes and create something that's safe. And even though it's temporary, it's nice. You know, parents can feel comfortable dropping their kids off and we're watching them.
And it provides an area for them to skate instead of in front of the businesses until we can find and fund, find a location and fund a state-of-the-art concrete skate park, which we will do eventually. Yes. All right. Any, and did you have a comment, Bill?
Yeah, I was just gonna tell you, this is an issue.
I don't, but I know we've had discussion of this site actually being a candidate for a permanent location.
Yeah, it, on the map, there's an area, I guess it would be to the north of the tennis courts. It's kind of untapped area that had been thought of that maybe a small parking lot or something, but talking with Travis and Eric Selly from engineering, it, it's possible that we could scale that. It doesn't need to be a monster skate park, but we could do a really nice project right there. And so what we're doing is trying to figure out how we fund that, which we'll do at some point in the budget.
If I could interject real quick, Jen, is there any way to get the, what I'm looking at on the screen on this one, which was Sean's last? Do we know how to? Oh, Peter, there you go. Thank you. That was fast.
Just like magic.
Yeah. So if you can see, if you look where the four tennis courts are, if you go east of that would be the location we'd be thinking of between, I'm going to say that's Groveland and the tennis court would be the, kind of the thought that we've been throwing around for a location, potentially.
Good. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any public comment on this item of the temporary skate park? Hey, Mr. Chapman?
Once again, Byron Chapman. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and well, the city staff and those here. Couple issues before I, well, actually last week and then this evening, before I came to the council meeting, I went by just to see who was or who wasn't there. And every visit that I've been out there, there have been kids there, bicycles, skateboards, kind of trying to do, still do their thing. I keep hearing about the, the safety issues, and I'm very much aware that the homelessness issue along Auburn Ravine, it's, it's constantly there. The, the people that I talked to that were out there, I basically said, you got three or four options. Every one of them said, well, why not here? And even this evening, when I, you know, gave them the options, they said, it's going to go where? Over there? Most of them were like, I don't even know how we're going to get there. Little way to get home. So some of the issues that were brought up not to go back to the park. One of my major concerns is oftentimes temporary does become permanent. It's, it's a nature of the beast. If you put the dollars that we have here to do it temporarily, then do you wash those because you know you're going to go somewhere else and start all over again or whatever you're going to do? So that's a consideration. Then the other items is, well, you know, if you're putting another fence up over the, the proposed location as opposed to McBean, then, then what do you do with McBean? Whatever you put in that spot, whatever you decide to do with that, aren't you still going to have to consider the safety issues regardless of what goes in there? So I, I, I don't see where you're really mitigating it unless you just leave it totally, we're not doing anything with it. So that's a concern as well. So I think that could be handled and taken care of. The police department does now indeed have drones. And we have two motorcycles that are off-road. I mean, and the police department does indeed still go through there for the rest of the park. So it isn't like you're just moving all of the park over there. All the other stuff still stays, and, and that's a concern. As we all know, it gets hot here in the summertime. If you look at Jimenez, and you look at the amount of shade that's out there now as opposed to where we are at McBean, that's a major factor as well. So I, I, I'm just thinking, looking at that, I, I actually took pictures of a bunch of people that were there. I got their permission. I said, you know, so what's your objections? And they said, well, not only do we go to the skate park, but we also play basketball. Family comes here on the weekend and we go over to the grass and we eat lunch and all that sort of stuff. So if, if you're looking at it as a temporary in that location, I'm thinking you have to address those issues regardless, and why not go back to the place where you were? And there is a pad there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chapman. I do have a speaker card for Albert Schyber on this item.
Yeah, thank you, Albert Schyber. This item, like I was talking about earlier, is kind of bittersweet too. The sweet part is I appreciate the council bringing it back and actually doing something about it and with it. Once again, I think that's Mr. Scully and Ms. Andriata pushing that. But regardless, I'm glad it's here. The bitter part is, you know, when that other one got taken out, you had a whole group of people that, that either called in or came to these meetings, and they wanted to do physical work, raise money, whatever it took to, to get something. And, and they got the usual treatment by the city of getting shunned. So kudos to Mr. Scully, Ms. Andriata, whoever it was that, that brought it back. You know, one of those people that got up talked about just some temporary rails that they would have made and donate. So no cost to the city or very little. So maybe think outside the box, maybe put some rails over at, you know, McBean Park or something simple. So there's something there for them. So they don't have to go clear across town. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schyber. Any other public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
I don't see any hands raised on Zoom. Let's give that just a quick second. No, Mayor, no hands are raised.
Chief Alves, do we have two motorcycles?
We do not.
That's what I thought. So let me just address Mr. Chapman's comments, which I really appreciate, Mr. Chapman. Because when the skate park first got taken out, I was, we were all very upset about it. I mean, and I'm not going to get into, you know, the decisions of the former city manager and all that. It was, it was, it was a tough time for everybody, and, and I was very upset about it. And I originally said that I wanted it to be put back in that original position. But I can't ignore the advice and the data from our law enforcement department. And, and actually, I've went out there myself several times, and I've spoken to several parents and other people who, you know, it is an issue. There's a lot of things that happen back there in the dark area where that skate park is, that by the time law enforcement gets there, they run off. Younger kids can't come skate there because older kids are doing things that they shouldn't be doing. And there's needles and there's bottles and there's all kinds of stuff that are being left that aren't safe for young kids who want to come skate. I also have heard the argument, well, you know, the pool is there and the horseshoe pits are there and the basketball courts are there and the park, okay. The point is, is that the pool is always supervised. The park is out front, the playground is out front, and you can see it from the road. The horseshoe pits are supervised by adults who, no one's going to go and mess with the horseshoe people, you know, it's open and it's safe. That, that pad where the skate park is, is a very unique area. So Chief Alves, wouldn't you agree with me that it, it presents some serious issues for safety and law enforcement to keep it there?
It does. And, and the data supports that. We handled incidents that were heartbreaking and needless, and a lot of that was due to the environment. There's a, a topic in law enforcement called crime prevention through environmental design and building and placing things in a spot where the environment allows for visibility and access. And the location in the backside of McBean was a great example of how not to do it. Just tucked away, we couldn't see anything. And the, the simple things like the location of the parking lot right next to the skate park and access to vehicles and, and nefarious conduct happening there, not saying that, that nothing would happen at any location in town. However, another law enforcement mantra that we say is predictable is preventable. Well, we know what has been happening at, at McBean, and we'd be negligent to repeat the mistakes of the past and, and do that location. So this location affords much better visibility, much better access. It's right across the street from Lincoln Crossings, Community Center there. So there's going to be eyes everywhere. And human nature is, if I can be seen, you're less likely to be, to be committing crimes. So it is a better location for those reasons.
Thank you. And the other thing too is, I have stopped and spoken to many kids skateboarding in town here and conveyed to them that we're working on it. We're going to get you a temporary place, then we're going to build one. And they're super excited. They don't care where it is. And they will make it there. They will get dropped off. They will skateboard there. Yeah, it may not be as convenient for some kids, but they will make it there. And so although I appreciate the arguments for keeping it at McBean, I had to change my own perspective on that and realize that this area is much better. And to your point, Mr. Chapman, about, you know, temporary sometimes becomes permanent, we are committed. And I, and I would say, yeah, it has taken us a little while because of COVID challenges, because of staffing, you know, transitions, you know, finding Mr. Scully. It's taken us a while, but I think I have held true to my promise to get this done. I've been promising all this time that we will bring it back and working with the, the Park and Rec Committee, working with our staff. Here we are, right? And so my promise is also, I don't know how we're going to do it, and I'm not saying when, but we will build a permanent skate park. We will fund it. However, we're going to do that fundraising through the budget, however. And so as long as I'm here, it won't become just permanent. We will build a state-of-the-art skate park for the kids because they deserve it and they need it. So I'm very much in favor of, of providing this space at Jimenez Park. And the, the Lincoln Bike and Skate Association is going to help get the equipment there, and then we're going to work with them to move forward. So if there's no other comments or questions, then I'm ready to vote on this, if you guys are.
Sounded like you made a motion.
Yeah. All right, I make the motion.
I'll second.
Hey, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent and Councilmember Lawrence.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for that. Okay, that brings us to item 11, council-initiated business. And as I said, I've got comments to make on the reason why most of you are here tonight. But before we get into that, I just want to make sure that, do my colleagues have anything else? Councilors, because I don't want to hijack your time if you have something that you want to say other than, no, okay. Bill?
I do.
Okay.
You want to go first?
Yeah, let me go first.
Go, buddy.
Okay, and then I will give you an opportunity to speak. So to the first question, why is Mr. Lawrence sitting here tonight after what happened last night? The answer to that is that we are bound by legal process. And we have to handle things in a legal way. You all can talk and meet and discuss. We cannot do that all together unless we're here or we have a legal reason for a closed session. And so legally, we had no way to exclude him from council meeting because he is technically an elected member of the council. So that's the answer to that question. Moving forward, we have scheduled a, an emergency closed session for tomorrow afternoon where we will be meeting in closed session to discuss this, and we will take this issue up. So, you know, can't speak to that right now, but, but that will be happening. What I want to say about the incident in speaking, you know, to you, Bill, respect you as a colleague, but for me personally, I have spent the last three years and even longer than that, before I actually got elected in 2018, building relationships in this community. Well, I grew up here, so I already have some. But with what everything the city has been through, building relationships and restoring the trust that the community has in their elected officials, I worked really hard, along with my colleagues, to rebuild that and to move forward. And tonight, we talked about some of the accomplishments that we have made in our systems and our processes and coming through the audit nonsense and all of that stuff and, and getting to a really good place. I mean, last council meeting, we, we, we voted to fund nine firefighters, which was so long overdue, but we have worked so hard to get there, and we were all super proud of that. And Bill, in a span of about 15 minutes, you managed to just destroy everything that I have worked for in the last three years. And hold on, I appreciate that, but hold on. We have talked to you before about how you talk to other people in this community. You have insulted You have insulted Kevin Kylie, you have insulted Matthew Oliver on other occasions. You have made comments, and you, and I'm saying this with all the respect that I can, you lecture us about being partisan or nonpartisan. We all work really hard. This is a nonpartisan board and our council, and we walk that line. You don't. Everything that comes out of your mouth, everything that, your interactions, not, I won't say everything, because that's not true, but a lot of it is clouded by your partisan beliefs, which you have a right to have. But I watched that video last night. I watched the video, Bill, and, and I was humiliated and appalled. And I, I just was at a loss for words. And I have heard and seen that video, it probably more now, but coming into council, it was already up to 120,000 views and over 500 or 600 comments.
Mayor Andriata?
Yes.
I just need to remind our council that there are Brown Act issues, and this is not an agendized matter. And we have a scheduled, you've given staff direction.
I know, but you know what? This community has asked for a response, and I'm going to give them one right now, okay? And I'll wrap it up. What I'm saying is, is that I'm not okay with what happened. And I, right now, the people have asked for your removal. We cannot legally remove him. He's an elected member, okay? You have to recall him if you want to. But I, as the mayor, am asking for you to resign tonight.
No, I'm not.
Okay, well.
I am not.
You need to resign.
I am not resigning. And I'd like to have my say now. Is that okay?
All right.
No. Okay, well, we can save it, so. Well, we do have to follow the law. And I probably said too much, but you asked for a response, and I'm giving you a response, and I, you know.
Do I get a response?
Are we allowed to let him respond?
I think we've gone far enough. And as, you know, mentioned, we've been given some direction, and so there will be opportunities in the future.
Council-initiated business, am I entitled to say something?
Are you going to be initiating a business that has not already been initiated?
Yeah, I'd like to respond.
Are you going to be initiating?
All right, you don't want to let me respond.
Well.
Yeah, I'm fine. People want to hear what I have to say.
It's not for this forum. This is initiation of business. It's not an open.
So here's what I will say.
Agendized item.
Is my suspicion is very, very strong that tomorrow night, council will take an action that returns this conversation in an agendized manner to this boardroom.
So be patient, we'll get back to you. Okay, thank you.
What should have happened.
Okay, all right. Any other information items from the council? Go ahead if you have one, it's fine. Nope, okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.